And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Police Oversight Tuesday the 10th of November 2020. Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon. Councilmember Wyatt.
Here. I'm present, Sean.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Galambe.
Here.
Councilmember Nowakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the quarterly Buffalo Common Council Police Oversight Committee meeting. Today, we're joined by members of the Buffalo Police Department, its command staff. We also have members of the Buffalo Police Advisory Committee that will be speaking today. As always, I ask and that if you would like to be heard, or if you'd like to file an item with our clerk's office to be heard, we'll provide the information. And I'll turn that over briefly to our council chief of staff so he can explain how you can file an item.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. For future meetings, if anybody would like to file an item or written comments to have on the record, if we ask that you please send an email to councilstaff@city-buffalo.com and then address the letter to say that you would like it filed for the record. Again, that email is councilstaff@city-buffalo.com. You can also leave remarks by calling 851-5109. Again, that number is 851-5109. And we'll have that information added to the comment threads on this video on Facebook.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll have Councilmember Rashid Wyatt take out of order item number 10 from the table.
Taking number 10 out of the order from the table?
Motion being seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
I am number 10. Reports to the council concerning community police relations.
This item is open.
Thank you very much. Today, we have members of the Advisory Board, the Buffalo Police Advisory Board, that meet with the community and has done great work engaging the community to get a sense of where the community is that regards policing. I want to thank all of the members for their volunteerism. With that, I want to turn it over to Danielle Johnson. I believe she chairs the Advisory Committee to make a presentation. Go right ahead, Danielle.
Good morning. Appreciate the chance to be able to offer a few remarks this morning. Wanted the chance just to give a little bit of an update on the work that we have done thus far and just some of our recommendations as well. And just to reiterate the importance of oversight, I know that that is something that we have spoken about and something that we have been, that we've looked it up for a while now, and we wanted just to give a little bit of an overview of it. As we have since the summer, we've proposed a new independent police oversight structure that takes from national best practices to improve upon models used elsewhere in New York State, such as Syracuse and New York City. And our model calls for the creation of a formalized and expanded version of the Buffalo Police Advisory Board that would provide the board with the ability to propose and approve and reject changes to Buffalo Police Department policies, not simply advise and recommend, though that is, those are important. We think that those should be expanded and subpoena as well as when needed. Other state models, such as Syracuse's oversight model, though it is a sound body, it allows for, only allows for oversight entity to make recommendations to police department policy changes, which means the role is simply advisory. And second, our model would institute a community police oversight commission that would have independent investigatory ability, full subpoena power, no political appointments, and independent legal counsel. Again, other state models have oversight structures that rely on the same legal counsel that the executive and legislative branches do and are composed of political appointees. By instituting an oversight model in Buffalo with political and legal independence in department policy, incident investigation, decision-making, we really believe it will have the ability to increase transparency and accountability within the police department and work toward creating a safer Buffalo community. With regard to use of force as well, in June, the Police Advisory Board provided recommendations regarding strengthening the Buffalo Police Department's use of force policy and in particular strongly recommended more prioritization of de-escalation, data collection, and ongoing department evaluation of use of force data. In that vein, we are requesting that Buffalo Police Department collect data on the Bolo Rap Pilot Project individual tool used on, which part of the body of the tool was wrapped around the officer and provide a report of this data to both the Buffalo Police Department and the Police Oversight Committee, the Buffalo Common Council Police Oversight Committee. We ask that the Police Oversight Committee refrain from approving any post-pilot budgetary requests for the Bolo Rap before the Police Advisory Board has the chance to review and have the opportunity to provide recommendations before the Police Oversight Committee has critically reviewed the report. And we have a report on this topic that is forthcoming as well as on the topic of different approaches to policing in relation to mental health issues. And also, we just wanted just to lift up that many community members have expressed that the ways in which they are interacted with by police escalates crises and does not de-escalate unfortunately. And the Police Advisory Board believes that the priority should be finding ways to protect all individuals involved in a crisis through verbal and nonviolent de-escalation techniques as opposed to adopting these new types of weapons such as tasers and bolo wraps because theoretically, they might be intended to not cause harm, but we have serious concern that they will. So, thank you very much for the chance to.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Byron Lockwood, have you had an opportunity to review the recommendations made by the Police Advisory Committee? Would you please comment on it? Commissioner Lockwood? Are we having a problem with audio with the Police Department?
I don't know, sir.
It reads that it's.
And then we just wanted to just make it, just to reiterate that the, the policy recommendations especially, well, around the use of force that we just described is forthcoming. So, that's something that we will be submitting to council very shortly.
Okay. Commissioner, can you hear us? Okay, we're having.
Commissioner, Commissioner, it looks like you are connected with your audio at this time, but you were on mute.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear me? Yes, we can.
Okay. No, I have not seen the recommendation.
Okay. Did you receive, did you receive the information from our council staff?
I was looking at my email. I didn't get through all my emails, but I didn't, if he sent it, I didn't get to it this morning.
Malcolm, did you send the commissioner the link?
I'm sorry, sir. Are you talking about the recommendations that Mr. Johnson just read out?
Correct.
We don't have the updated report. However, they have been sent the original that is on the agenda today.
Okay. Well, Commissioner, if you open up your email, you'll probably find the recommendations made by the Police Advisory Committee. And perhaps you can talk on some of the things the recommendation was for a, an oversight commission made up of citizens that don't include elected officials. And it's based on best practices and different models. Have you looked at any models with regards to citizens' commission or citizens' override oversight?
I, we, Syracuse, I have heard about Syracuse. I didn't read all into the one that they have in Syracuse. So, but I know Syracuse does have a advisory board.
Okay. Now, I'm going to open this up to some of the common council members to to chime in and their concerns or positions regarding Police Oversight Commission or a group made up, made up of citizens. Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had conversations with the Oversight Advisory Board and a number of community organizations, and I absolutely support a citizens' review board. I know I talked to them about the Syracuse motto, and they're right, it is an advisory one. But I believe there's one in Rochester that they're looking to do that's a little bit, gives them a little bit more teeth. However, that particular motto is up and being heard in court. They're going to be heard, their motto was going to be talked about or discussed in court in December. I've talked to the lead attorney from New York City about that motto. I think that may be a good compromise because it gives a template of incidents that the commissioner can utilize for punishment or for, to deal with various issue regarding police matters where officers are, there's some type of misconduct. The attorney seems very positive that this will work because I don't know right now from the state legislature, and I know the governor's been pushing more. And even our state attorney general has been pushing citizens' review boards. So, I absolutely support it. We put a resolution forth. We're still waiting for our corporation council to get back to us on drafting that legislation. But in the meantime, we continue to move forward. I know the mayor has seated this citizens' review body or a police review reform body. I don't know if they've met as of yet. I think council majority leader, you're on that, right? You and.
Correct.
Has there been a meeting as of yet?
I think we have one coming up. I would have to look on my schedule. But I think there's one coming up.
Okay, so I'm hopeful that there will be a lot of conversation in that, within that body to talk about that recommendation because I think to me, that is the catalyst of reform, to have that citizens' review board. So, I definitely stand in support of that and hope that we can get everyone else on, on, on board. Because again, this is not to penalize police, but there should be a level of transparency in how conduct is addressed. And right now, we haven't seen that. But I think that it's in the public's interest, and I think this is a good time for us to galvanize together as our president-elect is talking about us working in unity and working together because this is a very serious matter. This is an opportunity that we may not get again. So, I think that we should take full advantage of it and make sure that everyone is at the table to talk about how we can do policing better. I think that the community is asking for that, is demanding that. And we, as elected officials, need to make sure that we assist in making that mandate occur. And so, I'm grateful to every person on this, on this call and your efforts because everybody's efforts is moving this ball forward. And again, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would any, anybody else like to be heard on this? Commissioner, there are different models to look at. Some are advisory and some have some teeth. I think the community has been clamoring for this for a while now. It's one of the recommendations made by the Police Oversight, by the Police Advisory Committee, and hopefully we'll have, we can look at best practices perhaps. I would ask the Police Department, the administration, to consider looking at best practices and then come back to us in the near future. It doesn't have to be a Police Oversight Committee meeting and have a discussion. Once the legislation is prepared by corporation council, I would imagine we'll have more discussions on this as we move forward with the other commission that the mayor has set up. I'm sure that'll be part of the discussion as well. So, we ask you to at least consider looking at best practices and different models that are out there. Councilmember Christopher Scanlon?
No, I was just going to say, yes, we always looking at best models and practice, and we will be looking into that though.
Thank you. Councilmember Chris Scanlon?
Thank you, Majority Leader. Obviously, this Police Oversight Meeting, our committee is only meeting quarterly. Is there a way for the commissioner to provide us some sort of written response in a more timely manner? Maybe we could have staff provide him with a copy of both the original recommendations as well as any of the updates they've provided to us, and then have the commissioner and his team respond written, with a written response, just so we don't have to wait another three months for it. We get something and have communication and an open line of communication with them sooner.
Absolutely. Commissioner, a lot of the items that we're going to discuss today perhaps would require or necessitate you providing us with a response before the next Police Oversight Committee meeting, which we are going to announce today, which will be, we have locked in oversight meetings for the next two quarters. The next, the third quarter Police Oversight Meeting will be January the 25th. The second fourth quarter meeting would be April 21st of 2021. So, we have locked in those days for Police Oversight Meeting. That gives the general public an idea, advanced knowledge of when the meetings are going to be held, so they can provide any information that they would like and actually find something with the clerk's office so they can be heard here within the committee itself. So, we ask that many of the things that we discussed today that, that a written response would be forwarded to the common council hopefully in the near future, but certainly before the next Police Oversight Meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you. Council President Pearl Tempe. Would anybody else, common council member Rashid Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question since we're on this topic. Commissioner, I put forth a request asking for some internal affairs data several months ago. And I know prior to this meeting, the chief of staff was supposed to forward you that resolution. And I just want to get a, get a, get some information from you. When can I anticipate getting that information?
Councilmember Wyatt, we, we have that information. It's been forwarded to your office.
Okay. Well, I will, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, one of the other requests was use of force data. Do you provide stats with regards to use of force data?
They're posted on the web.
The use of forces posted, or the internal affairs complaints are posted on the web, but we're also reporting as the state mandates to New York State as well as recently, we started reporting to the FBI's use of force. So, the stats are produced.
Okay. Do you also produce or provide that to the common council?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Well, if you provide it to the state, certainly, we would like to have that information as well. So, if you would, please provide us with the use of force data.
Okay.
Thank you very much. If there are no other questions, we're going to move on with the other items, back to, back to the top of the agenda.
Motion to table.
Motion to tables, seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Number one, Minority Bar Association of Western New York Police ID Recommendations.
This item is open?
Item's open, seconded by Council President Pearl Tempe, Chris Scanlon. We have, I believe we have John Elmore here to speak on that. I saw John Elmore somewhere. There you are. Mr. Elmore, would you like to speak on this? You're muted. Would you unmute yourself?
All right. Thank you. Actually, I, I, there are a couple other members of the Minority Bar Association, Samantha White, as, as well as Miles Gresham, that I would like to yield some of my time to. First of all, let me commend the council for allowing us the citizens' participation in this. And I'm very impressed with what I've heard at the meeting so far. It does seem to me that the council and the city are making some efforts towards positive police reform. One of the things that I like to talk about, which I addressed in my, in my email to you, is my concern about the city of Buffalo's police policy now, which came through an executive order where they are no longer required to identify themselves with their badges and name tags. I think that this is a, a movement in the wrong direction when it comes to police transparency. First of all, this policy was not presented to the Police Advisory Committee before it was implemented. Secondly, we are in the middle of a pandemic. Police officers are wearing masks now, so you can't see them by faces, their faces. So, when you, when you get a video from a body cam or a police cam or whatever, from the video, you cannot, you have a difficult time identifying what police officers are doing what. Syracuse, as I indicated in a, a email, recently adopted a right-to-know law, which is aimed at police accountability. Law requires an officer to give his or her name, their rank, their command at the on-step of any questioning for any traffic stop. The officer must give a reason for the stop. And at the end of the interaction, if there's no arrest, the officer will leave a business card with this citizen. In addition to the officer's information, the card will include the phone numbers for the citizens' review board and the department Internal Affairs Office information. The law also requires the officer to ask for and receive recorded consent before searching a person or property without a warrant. The officer also must explain the, to the person that there will be no search. If the person refuses, the Syracuse right-to-know law is similar to a law that has been in effect in New York City for quite some time. We're living in an area where there's a, a lot of civil unrest in Buffalo that's been unprecedented, unprecedented. And, and I urge the Buffalo Police Department to restore the badges, to restore the, the name tags for the sake of transparency, for the sake of public confidence in the police department and the professionalism. I know that, that the rationale for that, that has been, that there has been some police officers who have been, I guess, harassed in social media. I can say that the remedy to that would be for the police officers to arrest those who are, who are committing the harassment. The police department has the authority to execute search warrants. They have access to social media. They can certainly find those perpetrators that are doing it, arrest them, lock them up, and that'll deter that from happening in the future. I can say that in my experience as a former police officer, as a prosecutor, and as a defense attorney, when a police, when a citizen asks a police officer for their name or their badge number, that often escalates the situation rather than de-escalates it. And a lot of, and when I talk to youth in the community about how to survive a police encounter, I always ask them to observe the badge number, to observe the name tag, but not ask for that information. I think it's a scary situation to have, to confront somebody that has a mask on, that has no name tag, that doesn't have a real, like, badge number displayed. In these times, is going to create a lot of fear. And, and I just urge you to change that policy. I'm willing to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Just the other thing I may add too, is that the judges and the, and the prosecutors and the defense attorneys, when these dangerous, so-called dangerous people get arrested and they're arraigned in city court, their family members are present and the, the family members who have access to the internet and social media, they're going to know the prosecutor's name. They're going to know the defense attorney's name. They're going to know the judge's name. And, and because they're going to be publicly disclosed, and so those, those individuals who deal with the same dangerous people that the police department deal with, their names are disclosed. And so, it would logically follow that if we're going to protect the police officers' names so that they're not subject to social media harassment, then it would logically follow then that you would want to not disclose the names of the judges or the defense attorneys or the prosecutors who are unarmed, who often walk to the courthouse and leave the courthouse and, and are in the elevators with the same dangerous people. And they're unarmed. You know, they're not afforded that same protection. It would be ridiculous to ask them to be anonymous. And I think it's the same level of ridiculous as to hide the identity of the police officers.
Thank you, John Elmore. We have Samantha White and Miles Gresham. Samantha, would you go first? And then we'll, we'll let the commissioner respond.
Thank you, Councilman Rivera. I appreciate the council's time and the apparent effort being put forth. The name tag policy was changed because of approximately a dozen police officers being electronically or telephonically harassed. That's wrong. We should, we should protect our police officers with the laws that are in existence. They could be prosecuted under aggravated harassment, penal law 240.30. We need to do that. But we need you, our council members, to speak on behalf of the 255,000 residents that you represent to say that we have the right to know which officer we're dealing with. We've heard it. It'll be on the paperwork. Well, what happens if you get stopped and you don't get paperwork? Hey, that happened to me. I filed a complaint with IAB. Guess what they said to me? What was the officer's name? Couldn't tell them. Not because, at this point, not because the officer got out of the car and I couldn't see a name tag. I just didn't know. But it's still one of the first questions. At the end of the IAB process, do you think that I got a name? No, I did not. I was told that I have to do a Freedom of Information Act request to do that. Well, the average person who isn't a lawyer is not familiar with that process. It takes a long time. It's riddled with technical reasons for the department not to respond. Technical reasons for them to deny public requests. Look, these body, these name tags are integral on these body camera feeds that we receive as defense attorneys. It's one way that we know that we've received all of the body cameras that we're entitled to under the law. And again, as John described, these officers are wearing masks now. So, even if you are familiar with a percentage of the police force with that mask on, that recognition is gone. We need the name tags back. We need our council to stand up and speak for the 255,000 people you represent and encourage and demand that this police force change the policy back instead of thinking solely of the dozen or so officers who were harassed, who could be protected under the current existing law. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Miles Gresham?
Thank you, Councilman Rivera. Other councilmen, Commissioner Lockwood, Deputy Commissioner Lark, thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. Going to be brief. I think John and Sam covered the issue fairly well. I just want to echo their comments and say that, you know, one of the privileges of being in this country is that we get to discuss the balance, right, between safety and individual liberty. I think that this name tag directive, which allows police not to show their names, throws that balance off in a kind of a scary way because what happens is. what happens is people do not know who's policing them. People do not know who to hold accountable. As Sam said, there's all kinds of barriers to that. And so certainly, we want police to be protected. You know, certainly, there are laws on the books that can and and should and and do protect people when they're harassed at their homes or when their families are harassed or when digital harassment occurs or anything like that. But to, you know, take away the right of the entire citizenry of Buffalo to know who's policing them because of the actions of, you know, alleged actions of a few individuals just throws that balance off. And so I would I would also remind the council that, you know, we hear stories nationally all the time of people who pretend to be police officers, who imitate police officers and pull people over and end up committing crimes against them. Having an officer's name tag, you know, knowing that you're a real cop, it is part of, you know, the 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 safety that we feel, you know, when we interact with police officers, and we'd like that back. So I would just ask that the council move to rescind that requirement and 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 restore the requirement for police to display their names on their uniforms. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the commissioner, just for the general public, the common council did not change the identification policy. That was a policy decision made by the Buffalo Police Department and the administration. With that, I'll allow Commissioner Byron Lockwood or somebody from the command staff to speak on the change in the identification policy.
I made the determination of changing the identification based on the need of both the officers and the public safety. There was a rising harassment concern with officers and their family. In order to allow officers to do their job without fear, I made the decision at that time. And and I think it's the, right now, I think it's the best decision to be made. But I hear that they're saying that there's no badge number. There is badge numbers out there. There's only for each badge number, it 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 pinpoints who that officer is. I understand about the name tags. But you can also have a situation where you have an officer with a mask on, and we have quite a few officers with the same last name and same initials. So we will go through trying to figure out who that person is. But a badge number goes directly to that officer. So the threats that was coming is just not the, you know, just phone threats. I mean, we have packages sent to officers' house. They're docking our our information. Myself got docked. And it's not that easy to track and trace because it's going country, it's going nationwide. And it's once you put that out there, people from other states or whatever, they get involved in it. So it's not just something that the average person on the corner is doing. This thing is going out nationwide.
Thank you. Council President Darius Pridgen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was listening to Mr. Elmore, to Attorney Elmore, about this, I think the the name was Syracuse Right to Know Law. Is that was that correct? Commissioner, have you ever heard of that? Because that sounds like something that would benefit the this whole situation if they were given something right after contact with police? Because what might come in are compliments in some areas, but what it definitely would do, I think, is to make sure that the the officer understands that this person knows who stopped them and that if they feel like something was wrong, that they have some recourse. Have you heard of the Syracuse Right to Know?
No, I haven't.
I I think it's something that that we should take up. I know the policy review. I don't want to, I'm trying to wait for this policy review panel to meet. But what I do think that we should do, Mr. Chair, is to get that information about the Syracuse Right to Know Law forwarded immediately to the Policy Review Committee that we asked to be put together and ask for a vetting of that and and then information back. It is the closest that I've heard to anything that is acceptable. I think it it builds trust and but it also it it also makes sure that officers know that when you stop somebody, you got to identify yourself. And I know you're just hearing about it, Commissioner, so I don't I I so I won't ask for your initial thoughts. But I will ask you the opposite way. Would that be something that you would think would not work in the department?
It's something that we will look into, Council President.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to ask council staff to immediately write to immediately contact Mr. Elmore for that information and do their own research and then forward that to the Policy Review Committee and asking that we hear back within thirty days. I think some of this stuff we have to put some deadlines on. Because if we just kind of throw it out there, it's just sometimes just going to be out there in the air. And it won't give anybody any impetus to say, let's really look at this and deal with it. I I do believe that there has to be, there should be some identification that a citizen is able to give. I talked to a young lady the other day who says she asked the officer his name. And I won't, yeah, he she didn't get it. So at the end of the day, I think that if everyone has to do that, I think that that may be a portion of a solution to that problem. Thank you.
Chief of Staff Eartha, would you please make sure that that information, the Syracuse Right to Know Law or Right to Know is sent to the mayor's commission? And you might as well send it to the council members so we could be knowledgeable with it ourselves. With that, I want to turn it over to the President.
Thank you, Majority Leader. A question for the commissioner. It's in a follow up to this Right to Know Law. I didn't, I think it was back in June, didn't the either the administration or the department itself, your administration announced they were going to start issuing stop receipts for people when they were pulled over, which would be kind of a similar thing with all the information, why they were pulled over, officer's information, et cetera?
Yes, we do that right now, just for traffic stops.
Okay. Okay, so perhaps this is if you're doing that, that's something we can build upon, again, through communication through the from the council and your administration to kind of expand on that. Again, moving in the direction of this Right to Know Law.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wingle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. Hello, everyone. Glad everyone is here. This is such a very, very important issue as it relates to the relation between the the community and the police and how police police the community. So we're talking about the identification and the right for citizens to know who's pulling them over and who's who's detaining them. You know, as a council member, everyone knows our name. Everyone knows where we live. They know where we work. They know everything about us. To the point, you know, not everyone is happy with the decisions that we make as council members. I remember vividly several years ago when we had made a change in policy with our corner stores, food stores. And I guess some of them got so upset that they put eighteen bullet holes in my car in front of my house. So of course, I'm alleging that that is what happened or the correlation, but folks know what cars we drive. All they got to do was go into the city park and rent to see where we parked. Folks know where we live. Our houses are published. It's public information when we run. You can get it from the Board of Elections. Folks, I mean, it it's 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 easy for folks to find out where we live, and we have to make some tough decisions. We have had our houses, you know, folks rallied in front of our houses and in front of our homes. That that happens as a council member. But that is a cost that comes with the responsibility. That is the cost that comes with the accountability. That is the cost that comes with the position that we have. And with our police officers, they wield a considerable amount of power. And they have the power of life and death in their hands. And if they feel threatened, they have the right to use excessive force and even deadly force if that should 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 be warranted in their own eyes. Now, my my office, to the point of of Counselor Elmore, you know, i- you know, everyone knows that Mr. Elmore is 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 one of the juggernauts in our community regarding, you know, defense, criminal criminal defense and everything else. And he also wrote a book. He wrote a book, y'all. He wrote a book on how to interact with the police. And the book has some very great points. He does workshops and seminars on how to engage with the police. And nowhere in his book does it say you 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 don't have the right to ask the police for their name and their badge number. Now, of course, we all know, not we all, we may not all know this, but the the Right to Know policy was codified in response to New York City to the stop and frisk. So stop and frisk was, of course, a disaster, even though crime had went down, it was a disaster. So this was the response took them two two years. And in two thousand and eighteen, my staff has given me some preliminary information on this already in the past, because we had already been doing our research. The first time it was brought up by our, you know, Police Advisory Board, other things we've done research on. It was it was it was passed in two thousand and eighteen after two years because of the disaster that ensued because of stop and frisk. And it literally is a right to know. I think the people have a right to know who's pulling them over. Again, I think someone had mentioned that folks were perpetrating police, impersonating police officers. This is a scary thing. And some police officers will pull you over in unmarked vehicles. Hey, you pulled me over in unmarked car. I'm not pulling over. I'm just telling you now. I mean, I don't I don't think I'm going to want to pull over. If I see an unmarked car, it is, we are supposed to be able to see and identify a police officer when they walk up on us. And when they get close enough to us, we should be able to see their name and badge number. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And I think we all should work together, the police, the Advisory Board, the Common Council, the the police brass and the administration to assure that folks are that we are doing our very best to restore the the confidence and the trust. Because a lot of the civil unrest that we are experiencing is because of the relation between police and community and the killing of unarmed black men and women in this country. So I think that this is a time where emotions are very, very high, but the reality is we are justified in our emotions. We're justified in feeling the way we feel as it relates to being uncomfortable, not knowing a police officer's name. And again, too, the point has been made. Most of them don't even live in the city of Buffalo anyway. And if they live in the city of Buffalo, they would know who their neighbors are, and maybe they would be less threatened by them because they know them. The reason why people fear stuff in the first place is because they are ignorant of what it is. They don't know. It is a lack of knowledge. That's why people fear. They fear what they don't know. So if the police officers knew the constituency of which and who they were actually policing, they wouldn't be worried about people knowing their name, because people would know who they are anyway, because they would live right down the street from them. So I believe this is a great opportunity for us to restore, begin restoring the confidence with the 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 community. And again, Buffalo can be the leader if we just get out of our own way and do the right thing. I have complete confidence in Byron Lockwood's leadership, Barbara Locke's leadership, Joker Magley's leadership, Byron Brown's leadership, Darius Prizes' leadership, Chris Scannell's leadership, David Rivera's leadership, and Danny Johnson's leadership. I have complete confidence in all of you. John Elmore, everyone on here, Dominique, everybody here who has done something to work, Tam, you, everyone on here, I'm looking at y'all on my screen. But everyone on this call, Sam Rappert and Miles, everyone here has had a hand in getting to where we are. And I think we just need to continue to keep our foot on the gas pedal. Just because Biden won don't mean the war is over. We got to keep fighting and keep pushing and making sure that we are restoring the 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 trust between police and community. I think this is a way that we can do it. So let's move forward in that direction. And I'm looking forward to our staff getting more information, because I know that, like I said before, my staff has given me some preliminary information on this a while ago, not a while ago, but a little a little bit ago. And we're familiar with it and not really in depth, but we're familiar with it. I think this is a great way. And just to be fair to our commissioner, please review this. And let's all have the conversation to see how we can implement something like this in the city of Buffalo. I'd be happy to to sit at the table and be a part of that conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity.
Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I I understand the commissioner's responsibility to protect his officers. I don't think anyone on this call right now would disagree in how you have to make sure that they're safe. We don't want anything to happen to our officers. But when you think about the history of policing, you know, there was a time when during civil rights that people covered their badges. And black and brown people suffer suffered because they covered their badges. We didn't know who they were. And it's just kind of ironic that we would have a commissioner put something in place that we've overcome from that long ago. And I'm hopeful that what we presented today and Mr. Elmore, he presented that the police department would take that into consideration. We are trying to move forward. We are trying to become more transparent. We are trying to come unify as a community to talk about how do we reform policing in a way that respects us all and not just one particular group, but all of us. We know that black and brown people have been neglected by police for a long time. It's a history. You can go on Google and again, you can bring up pages upon pages about how we've been mistreated by the police department. Now we have an opportunity to reform those things, and we can all take a take an active role in making those changes. But we have to have an open ear. I think the police department has so many avenues in which they can have investigations. The police, the FBI can investigate these things, can't they? If there is a police officer being threatened, I believe the FBI can get involved. So maybe that's what we need to do. Because we certainly don't want our police out there being threatened by anyone. But at the same time, we want to balance it out. Because we know that some people have been threatened and they feel like they have no hope. And so here we are at a time in which we can restore hope, we can restore trust. And I'm really hoping that the commissioner and the police command staff and even the union would have a listening ear for us to come together and look at how do we deal with these issues and not point fingers at who did what, but how that we can move forward. I think this is a conversation the common council has definitely been at the forefront of having, because I don't think any of my colleagues have any problem with hearing from the community. That's what our jobs are. But we definitely need to make certain that we all, even the administration, is open to us working together, working collaboratively. And this is a this is an issue. I mean, I think what Mr. Elmore said right on point. Judges and attorneys, they all have their information right there where you can see it when you're in a court of law. But the person that pulls you over to get you to that point, you got to remember their number. I'm good at numbers, but I don't think I can remember a badge number. And with the mask being on officers' faces and those things, there's a lot of things that hinder us from being able to identify someone. I think Council President Pridgen one time talked about the numbers on the police cars. We need to be able to identify the police car in which we were pulled over, and we called for those numbers so that residents, if they're pulled over or individuals pulled over, they can say car number fifteen or five fifty four, pull me over. We we need to have those protections in place. And I think right now, when you take the badges and people can cover them up, it really does not help what we're trying to do as far as the reforms. It really takes us backwards. So I'm really hopeful that the police department, along with the administration, will have an open ear to hear how we can do this in a more proactive way where we don't go backwards, but we continue to move forwards. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Brian Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, you know, I think that our colleagues covered most of it, but I wanted to thank Counselor Elmer Elmore and his team for bringing in unique perspective. I think it's important to hear from inside the courtroom and their their perspective very much. And I do support, you know, know your rights or stop receipts. I think in we need to know for both sides documenting what happened. There's a lot of situations where they don't come away with a police report. So I would like to see stop receipts or or follow through with this know your rights. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, I'll let you respond. I understand you have to reconcile the safety of the police officers with the right of the public to know who it is that that is stopping them. As somebody mentioned, there's two hundred and sixty or two hundred and fifty people in the city of Buffalo. And if one of them gets stopped, Um, and if one of them gets stopped, or many of them get stopped, um, many of them reluctantly won't go through it because they're unable to identify the police officer simply because of a badge number they perhaps can't read or or is too long. And many cases or many complaints will probably go unreported as a result of them not being able to properly identify the police officer. So that is something that needs to be reconciled and weighed in when you're making this decision. Um, I want, um, I know that you mentioned the police officer's safety, but did you consider the need of transparency and accountability when you made that decision?
Uh, yes, I um, cons- considered the accountability. I, like I said, I, I'm I'm always looking at this uh, safety, not only for the officer, but but for the public's safety too. Um, and you, wha- what we have to understand is, I hear what everyone is saying about the name tags, but this this situation that we're going through right now, it it seems like it's taking it to another level. I mean, I have done many when I um, was working back in underco- uh, undercover and what have you and um, many people found out who I was and stuff, but I still didn't get threats, like the threats that's coming now. Uh, threatening your family, putting your family, um, business where they work at all out there, you know, out, just out there. Uh, I never went through that um, before. And this, what's happening now is something different. And until you go through it and if your family or you are going through this, then you will at least have an understanding to what, you know, what we're going through.
Thank you. Uh, this item, obviously, as council member, council president, uh, Darius Pritchett mentioned, will probably be discussed at length uh, within the commission that the mayor has set up. And this information, right to know, will be one of the items discussed. Uh, and I certainly will bring it up as well, based on what I'm hearing here today and based on the report from the minority bar association. Uh, Council President Darius Pritchett.
I'll be very, very quick because I know you have a long agenda. Um, if there is not a, you said that you think that there's a meeting coming up. I wanna be clear of how important this issue is and how we need to really move very quickly uh, on this. Um, every issue I've taken up, I I don't drag it through. If I said I'm gonna take it up, we're gonna take it up. Is there, you you don't know if, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, is there a definite date for the policy committee? Yet, that has been given? Does anybody on this call?
Mr. Chairman, by the end of the meeting, I'll try to have that information for you.
Because I think that if the policy, what what I don't wanna see is that the policy committee get a hold of this and it kinda sits on the table. I think that there are some clear, uh, some clear paths to at least beginning. Um, a portion maybe of the Syracuse right to know or portions of it. And what I mean is, if the officer, if right now, the policy that was uh, that the badge number had to show and 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 I I, Councilmember Wyatt is right, I talked about this years ago, um, I'm not gonna remember a badge number. I'm I'm just not. But I think with having uh, having every officer have to have a card in their pocket and you can give them fifty cards that are blank and they gotta write their badge number. They get done and they have to give, they, whether a person asks for it or not, you give them because I think to make them have to ask for it is intimidating. And it does start these kinda back and forward, uh, depending on who the officer is. I think a good officer will give it to you without a problem. I think an officer who doesn't wanna be identified and and who feels like, you know, you're you're questioning authority, they're not going to. I think it ought to be given every single time. And if we're not at the point of a name yet, it ought to be the badge number. Um, and I think that needs to happen very, very quickly and I don't wanna see this drag out. Um, if we don't even have a date for the policy committee to meet, uh, uh, that that's not gonna be acceptable. I I don't think. I think this is important. Um, I I learned of it and I think whoever, I think it was you, Mr. Chairman, who made it very plain this wasn't, and thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner said publicly, he made that decision. We uh, we read about it in the newspaper, to be very honest. So that's why we're discussing it now, where people say, why didn't you do it before? We 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 weren't included in that decision, nor do we have to be included in it. But once this brought to our attention, it is our responsibility. So uh, com- uh, Chair, if you don't get a date by the end of, but before we meet in in council, um, then I would, I would, I would move that we work with Commissioner, but uh, also with with uh, the bar, uh, Minority Bar Association, see where can we come in the middle so that people can identify. And this shouldn't start in January. We should be making this happen in the next few weeks. This is not, this is not rocket science to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President. We did receive a date while you were speaking. It's November the eighteenth at four P M. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this item? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you very much.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember uh, Winkle.
Item number two, Minority Bar Association of Western New York recommended policing reforms.
This item is open.
Item is open, seconded by, item is open.
Um, so, um, Miles Gresham again. Um, I just wanna run through these really quickly. Uh, these recommendations were put out by the Minority Bar Association uh, a couple months ago. And so, you know, some of them are no longer an issue, fortunately. Um, the first one that we recommended is that uh, the city act to ban body camera interference. Um, there are often times when, you know, an officer uh, can turn off or on a body camera um, at will. Um, most officers I know follow the body cam uh, rules. Um, but in cases where they do not, um, it can provide sort of an inaccurate record of what happened. Um, in Colorado, uh, the legislature just moved to uh, create a presumption of interference. Um, whenever a body camera was turned off, um, that that presumption can certainly be overcome in cases where, let's say, there's a scuffle between a, you know, suspect and an officer and the camera gets turned off accidentally. Um, but we would ask that the city move to uh, strengthen the body camera laws, uh, or rules rather in this city um, and back it with the force of law, um, as the council just did with uh, Carriell's Law. Um, second, we would ask that the uh, that the practice of uh, what we call collars for dollars um, be stopped. Um, what happens now is that the police are given uh, four hours of um, overtime, and it's not traditional overtime, it's not time and a half, but it's four additional hours of pay uh, every time they step into a courtroom. Um, sometimes that's necessary, you know, if an officer's there uh, for hours waiting for a trial. Um, but when an officer goes in and spends, you know, five minutes talking to a DA, um, we feel that the city shouldn't be paying them four hours of time every time they do that, um, especially with the city facing a budget deficit. Uh, the third, uh, which Dr. Johnson spoke on really eloquently is uh, enhance civilian review, review, that review power for the Buffalo Police Department. Um, an article recently came out in the Buffalo, in the investigative post regarding an officer, uh, Joseph Hassett, and it detailed um, how many things uh, Officer Hassett did. Um, and and yet he's still on the force. He um, he fired a gun in violation of department policy. He was given a talking to. Um, he, you know, tripped someone who was handcuffed. He was given uh, a suspension. Um, but ultimately, he's still on the force. And so, um, at this point, uh, we're asking for civilian review power because uh, we feel that um, the power of the police to discipline its own officers is not sufficient enough. It's not that the police management has not tried to discipline a lot of these officers. They have. Um, but because of the existing rules, because arbitration is so favorable uh, to police officers, um, we are asking that uh, the the people uh, be given a voice in whether or not these officers are allowed to continue to police us. Um, to that end, uh, the fourth recommendation is that uh, police disciplinary hearings be made public. Um, right now, in the police contract, um, there, you know, there are um, uh, protocols set out for um, a major violation of of department policy versus a minor violation. Um, but the major versus minor distinction isn't clear at all in the contract. Um, and with respect to minor violations, um, the uh, the disciplinary process for minor violations does not have to be recorded. Um, there doesn't really have to be much record of it at all. Um, and we feel that that's disturbing. For example, going back to the Officer Hassett example, when he fired a gun in violation of department policy, which could have killed someone, um, all he got was a talking to. Um, and so to make that disciplinary process more clear, um, we would ask that it be brought into the public light. Um, five, of course, is get police out of schools. We understand that that is a call that is to be made by the school board and not the common council. Um, however, uh, there is um, uh, an M O U um, that no member of the school board can find, uh, which which uh, determines uh, the um, the uh, relationship between off-duty police officers and the Buffalo Public Schools. So we have off, the off-duty officers who are embedded in some schools, um, who are paid by the Buffalo Public Schools. Um, and yet the school board, which is in control of the Buffalo Public Schools, uh, can't even figure out um, how they're paid. That's not a knock on the Buffalo Public School Board, uh, but rather just um, uh, raising a concern as to the transparency, as to how all this works. Um, to be clear, we are not uh, suggesting uh, that SROs, those officers which respond to emergencies at schools uh, be discontinued, nor are we suggesting that uh, the security officers who are in schools be taken out. We are simply saying that having uh, off-duty police officers embedded in schools uh, where they can inter- interrogate kids, you know, without their parents, uh, without a lawyer present, um, it criminalizes kids and it harms them, and we're asking that that process be changed. Um, six is a moot point, thanks to the common council. Uh, we ask that Carriell's Law be passed. It has, uh, we thank you for that. Uh, and seven, uh, is to end car searches based on the smell of marijuana. Uh, Commissioner Lockwood, uh, to his credit, uh, did uh, put forth a rule um, uh, ordering police uh, not to uh, search cars based solely on the smell of marijuana. Um, however, as we've seen with stop receipts, uh, sometimes that doesn't always happen. And so we're asking the council consider uh, backing up Commissioner Lockwood's uh, order with the force of law um, and passing a law that would ban police from uh, engaging in those kinds of searches that are already violative of department policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, uh, can you respond to some of the recommendations made by Minority Bar Association? The first one would be the, the body cameras, the interference in body cameras. Like, can you tell us what the policy is when the cameras are turned off or anything? Or inappropriately turned off?
Well, we have a policy that's in place that was uh, negotiated with the union. And the policy is that once the call come, come out, they are to turn their uh, cameras on. Now, to cut a camera off while you in the middle of a um, call, whatever, then there's discipline. Um, they can be brought up on charges for that. But then there's times where um, where they're allowed to cut it off if they're discussing um, something that's not related to the crime that's happening out there. The second thing is um, cut overtime. That's um, that's in the um, P V, that's with the contract. That's something that would have to be negotiated with the city and the um, union. That's I I've been on over thirty years and that's always been there. So that's something that I have no control over. Um, as far as the um, getting, I mean, the the schools, um, the off-duty police officers, I have no control over what they do off-duty. I control this school resource officers, but what if, when a person takes a job outside the Buffalo Police Department and the school hires them, then that's between them and the school. I have no um, powers with that. And um, Carriell Law is already done and the uh, marijuana searches, we uh, I put a general order out on that, so.
Uh, Commissioner, with regards to off-duty officers working, um, do they still have to get permission from the commissioner in order to work second jobs?
Yeah, they have to, they they give us a, I sign off on the second front form, um, acknowledging that they're working. Um, but I have no, um, as far as their pay or what they do, I have no say. And on that form, I also stress in there that they're not to wear um, B P D uniforms or use their um, equipment. But with the schools, it was something that was um, I guess, negotiated um, before, you know, I took over and they allow them to wear their uniform at schools, negotiated with the um, city and the um, school.
While working at schools, are are they allowed to investigate, interrogate students?
Off-duty officers?
Yes.
I would say if if there's a crime there, they will call nine eleven to have the on duty, but a school resource officer should respond. They the one who starts the initial investigation. Whatever the investigation is, it should be done through the school resource officers.
Okay, so should they act in the capacity as a police officer while off-duty? Um, what recourse do you have?
You you came in, I didn't get your whole question.
If they're acting in a capacity as a police officer while they're off-duty uh, at the schools, um, interrogating or investigating something, what recourse do you have? If they're working outside of um, i- if they're working as law enforcement when they're off-duty?
Well, if something should happen uh, when you're off-duty, um, if a crime is committed or whatever, you you have, you should respond to it. And um, probably the best thing for them to do instead of investigating, they should call um, they should call the immediate um, unit. If it's, you know, something as far as um, sex victim unit, if it's involving them or if it's involving a homicide, they will call homicide. They shouldn't take it on themselves to do an investigation.
Okay, uh, I think we just need to get a little clar- clarification on this. With regards to interrogation of students, um, without their parents being present, these are minors and I think they're restricted as um, not having a parent there. So I just want some clarification to make sure that they're not um, doing anything that is being alleged because I really haven't heard or seen a complaint. It's it's only an allegation right now. But uh, just assuming for the sake of of discussion that they are being interrogated, I just wanted to make sure that they're working outside of the scope of a police officer.
I I, this is, if if they're doing that, this is the first I have heard of it. Uh, I know all police officers should know um, that, you know, even if you work in the second front, if some crime should happen, you are to call the on-duty officers to respond to that.
Is this part of when they're filling out their second front forms that you mentioned? Um, is that within that form that they can't do those things?
No.
Is there a reason why it can't be mentioned in the second front forms?
Yeah, that would be something that we'll probably have to sit down and talk with law.
Well, yeah, that would, I think that um, just to protect the city, that they're working outside uh, capacity as a police officer when they're working their second front, they're like any citizens, they should call nine eleven um, or somebody to handle whatever it is is occurring. But that should be something, perhaps it should be put in the second front form, like giving them advanced notice. And certainly don't wanna give them the luxury of saying, hey, it wasn't on the form. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Rashid Wyatt.
Um, now, the question that we were asked, that you had asked regarding officers or off-duty officers um, uh, questioning students, uh, don't we have someone from the law department on for regarding police law? Municipal law?
We do have John Heffron, I'm sorry, um, John Hannibal on. I'm not sure if John wants to speak to this.
John, can you speak to this? Is John Hannibal on?
I apologize, there was two mute buttons on. Assistant Corporation Council John Hannibal. Um, if I'm understanding your question, you're asking about the questioning of students by an off-duty police officer um, who's working a second front. Um, that's not really a labor issue at this point. This is really a criminal procedure law at this point, like what can an officer do because they're an officer, but they're not acting in the capacity of an officer? I would just say, like, before I wanna give a knee-jerk response to that, I'd have to probably uh, do some research into case law and see, you know, where that stands. I'm also a former criminal defense attorney, so, you know, I may be a little bit biased in my response. I think I probably need to go back and investigate this a little bit further. Um, I would say there are always concerns when you start investigating uh, something uh, in questioning any type of a minor, uh, but what happens is you have an appearance of authority with someone that's a police officer on one, on the one hand, on the other hand, they're not wearing their uniform. hand, they're not wearing their uniform, um, um, so they start asking questions, but then those answers, uh, that are being given end up being used, uh, in the prosecutorial law, uh, steps. So I, if, if I'm making myself clear, I think that's what the concern is here, and I, I don't know where that lands. Any defense attorney were sent out, and I think, uh, Mr. Elmore would agree with, you know, challenge, uh, the questioning, um, and, and trying to get it, you know, kicked out, um, but, you know, I think this is kind of crossing the border from, uh, a municipal, uh, issue only and kind of crossing into the borders into of, uh, criminal defense and, uh, criminal procedure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a real quick question from something that was stated earlier regarding the cameras. Uh, what options does an officer have to only record video? I don't remember if we had this question before, but I do remember talking around this. The cameras can be turned off if conversations go personal or non-relevant, but can they just, at that point, instead of turning off their body cam, can they, can they just record video only because something relevant could be happening in the surrounding area that might help the case or, or whatever, I'm just wondering?
Councilman, if I can address that, uh, the, one of the provisions for an officer to deactivate their camera while on a call is if officers have to step outside of that call in an order to discuss police tactics or how they're going to, uh, you know, further handle that call, when they are with someone, when they're doing an enforcement action, when they're on a call and they are with people, uh, they have to have those cameras on. So when you're deciding how that call is going to be handled or a tactic or, or how something is going to occur, that, so those tactics cannot be, uh, uh, broadcast, those tactics then can be turned off.
So, was, I, I, so, uh, thanks, Joe, but to be a little bit more clear, uh, those things can be censored or redacted or, or, or taken out, um, just like other things are redacted when someone requests or there's a formal request, uh, made, therefore request made. So I'm asking that because, um, I'm just saying, something could be relevant, I'm not a police officer, I don't know, I'm just wondering why would they would turn the cameras off, I don't, I hope I'm answering this question right, but I just don't see a reason for turning the camera off if we have the ability to just either turn off the audio, and I think that's where I'm getting to, can they just turn the audio off and just keep recording?
No, they cannot turn the audio off.
Right, right, that's a, that's a clear, clear question answered. Now, in this case, since they can't turn off the audio, can they just keep recording and then at certain points when, when it's being played back, they, you know, just cut that part off or censor it?
We cannot redact video that becomes discoverable and has to go into court, obviously the, uh, defense, the prosecution, uh, and ultimately the judge and jury will have the ability to hear everything without redaction.
But, uh, now, now, I am not an attorney and I don't have the line of questioning that would reach the depths of a John Hannibal or a John Elmore, or anyone else in here, Miles Gresham, but at the same time, let me just push a little bit further, Joe, so if they turn the cameras off, isn't that the same thing?
If it's, if you have something, you have to produce it. So if you have a supervisor discussing with an officer an approach to a house, uh, an approach to something else, again, just with tactics, or if they have to make a phone call to, uh, the district attorney, something of nature, that they step outside of the arena of the call, that is the time where they can deactivate that camera. When they re-engage in the call where they're around people, they have to turn those cameras back on again.
So I wish I hadn't asked that question, because now I have another question, which really has to do with, uh, you know, if there is something that is discoverable, it has to be submitted. Now, with, with that being said, aren't they then technically, technically, uh, keeping information that could be had, let's say, for instance, that tactic that they're using to address that situation could be helpful in the full context of the situation, uh, wouldn't that information be helpful as to what strategy they were using to, I know we don't like to disclose police strategy, and I, and I know better than that, and I'm not asking you to do that or anyone to do that for that matter, but, uh, there has to be a way for us to just mute it so that that isn't, that isn't, that isn't being disclosed, but that really poses another question, which is, uh, are they then willfully keeping information from us then?
Well, no, if they're deactivating the camera outside of the policy, then that's where disciplinary action comes in, and if there are multiple officers on a scene, there are still going to be officers that are going to be engaged in the call with their cameras activated. We have seen instances where, uh, a supervisor and officer have stepped, again, away from the, uh, the, I'll say the, uh, the interior of a call while the officer's still dealing with the call, are on, have their cameras on, and you can see them step aside, but again, it's, it all comes, boils down to, to the tactics, they can certainly be asked and answer questions by, uh, the prosecutor and the defense attorney if and when the case comes to trial, but everything that is produced is discoverable, everything has to be turned over. And they are still subject to questioning on, uh, on, you know, what was done at the time that they, uh, their cameras were turned off. But they cannot turn the cameras off when they are engaging with the public in, in some type of call or enforcement action.
Okay, so I, I, I appreciate your response, but I, I guess, um, the, uh, my line of questioning is be, they're becoming generative questions that are just generating other questions on top of questions, and I, and I know we have a lot of, a lot of other issues to, to, to address, but, um, I guess, I don't, I'm, I don't want to say I'm confused at this point, uh, 'cause I'm not, I'm just not understanding then why, so basically, this is what I'm thinking in my head, that's, that, that has me kind of going back and forth, vacillating whether I'm going to continue, is because I'm thinking to myself whether or not, uh, you know, we can fully understand the full context, because if a person steps out of someone else's frame on their camera to turn off their camera, and there's guidelines and protocols in place for them to turn off their camera, but we don't know the context of why they turn it off, because they can say anything if they step out of someone else's frame, you see what I'm saying?
I, I, I see what you're saying, but again, it's not, the cameras are there to document interactions with the public, and when they are interacting with the public, those cameras, by policy, must be on, and if they are not, then again, there's discipline that can be faced. Um, you know, we went through a very, uh, rigorous exhaustive negotiation period with the union, uh, to get a body camera policy signed and agreed upon, uh, we could not enforce our body camera policy prior to the agreement, uh, date signing, because it was not agreed upon with the union.
All right, okay, so the uni, so, I mean, let's, let's, let's face it, the union has been a major impediment in a lot of the things that we have been trying to get done for the community, both yourself as command and both the council and administration, the union has blocked a lot of the things that we want to see done with our police department, including residency and with the fact that they can turn these cameras off, again, I, I didn't know it wouldn't be long before the Police Benevolent Association, you know, uh, came up as, again, being an impediment in progress. I mean, they're not mean people, but the policies that we are asking for are not unrealistic, and it just seems that every time we turn around to try to work on something, it's like the union is the reason why, just like with the other things that are contractual, with the four hours of pay to go to court to appear for a ticket, and we're paying them four hours, I mean, that's contractual. The answer is always easy and simple, because it's contractual. Um, why can't the police do this, or why can they do that, it's contractual. So, I mean, again, we, we all need to kind of come together and, and deal with this police union situation, if you ask me. Mr. Chair, thank you, I'm all done.
You're on mute.
Apologize. Nickon? Thank you very much, um, uh, the body camera policy is on the website and also the reasons of where police officers, uh, can turn the body camera off, so if you want to look at that, it's on the city's website. We have a long agenda in front of us and we have a council meeting shortly after this, so we're going to try to move through the agenda and try to get as much as we can. Uh, with that, I am going to ask councilmember to make a motion on this, so we can move forward.
Motion to table?
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Winkle.
Item number three, Bola Wrap Pilot Program Communication.
Item's open.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Councilmember?
Um, I know that this has been met with a lot of, um, pushback, and I'm not sure that I'm even supportive of it to the extent that I know we're going to get, I believe, six months free, and then I wanted to know what is the cost after that? Um, from what was stated is that the Bola Wraps pilot program will be used in situations where there is maybe some mental, um, illness type of situation, is that correct, Commissioner?
You're on mute.
Um, um, that's correct, it's, the initial program was going to be launched with our B H D team, uh, which is responsible for now.
Who's speaking?
Uh, sorry, Captain Ronaldo.
Captain, okay. So, okay, I'm sorry, were you saying it was going to be used with what?
With our behavioral health, beware of these devices when first be deployed.
Okay. And, and the initial six months is, you know, pilot is free, no charge, um, but what is the cost thereafter?
There's no recurring cost, simply purchase the device, which is approximately a thousand dollars, and then you purchase cartridges for it at thirty dollars each, so there's no cost to, no recurring cost to own the device, it's just the initial upfront cost to purchase them.
Okay. How, how would that be, um, distributed, how would it be, um, issued to operate for the various districts in our, in our city?
We wouldn't know the answer to that until after we do the pilot project to see if the device met our needs, is it effective, was it utilized, those types of things.
Okay. Well, what's your, what's your initial thought in using it, I mean, um, do you have some idea how you would incorporate it, correct?
Well, the use of it, 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 it's not a weapon, it's a restraint device, so the use would be when somebody is presenting, uh, the need for them to be restrained and do not appear as if they would cooperate with that process, then that is the opportunity for the Bola Wrap to be used. Uh, again, a lot of times when officers have to do a nine forty-one, which is a mandated mental health exam, people tend to become combative, they don't want to go to the hospital, and that requires officers to engage the person, to have to forcibly handcuff them, strap them onto a gurney, those types of things. The Bola Wrap hopefully does for us, is it removes the physical encounter and simply immediately restrains the person safely, humanely, allows officers and paramedics to then place them onto a gurney, and eliminates the possibility of having to use other weapons, such as tasers or pepper spray or batons or things of that nature.
So, I know I saw your demonstration that you had did with some of the council member, well, with the council members, um, present, um, how effective is that when someone is running?
Well, it, it, it wouldn't be overly effective when somebody's running, it's part of the research we've done, it might work, it might not work, um, ideally, the situation would be when somebody is standing still, uh, the company that produces the device has done a lot of research into, uh, police officer and fatal, fatal encounters with individuals, and there, there is a, uh, consistent norm that prior to somebody attacking an officer, prior to a physical encounter, at some point, the individual is generally standing still and in the position where the Bola Wrap may have been effective in being deployed. So, uh, if you pull up on a call and somebody is running down the street, the Bola Wrap's not going to work, there would be other methods. But if you pull up on a street, you're speaking to somebody, they become excited, the officers start seeing telltale signs, the person may become aggressive, that is the opportunity for the Bola Wrap to immediately restrain that person and completely de-exulate the need for any further use of force.
Uh, my, my next question's a legal question for Corporation Counsel. In the event that someone is injured with, um, uh, utilizing the Bola Wrap, let's say, um, they run and the Bola Wrap wraps them, of course, and let's say they hit their head and have some type of contusion, is the city liable in that situation where we could be sued?
Assistant Corporal. John, is that you?
I'm on mute, but you go ahead, uh?
Go ahead, John, because you're more involved in the police than I am, so you can go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, Assistant Corporation Counsel, John Hannibal, um, there's an old saying that you can, you know, prosecute a, a ham sandwich, right? So, uh, you can sue the city for just anything you want, the question is whether you're going to be successful, that's going to be dependent on the circumstances of the particular case. Anytime someone's injured, if there's some type of negligence involved, it's not used properly, you know, there, there could be a lawsuit, um, it's going to be up to our attorneys to argue, uh, that it was used properly and there was no negligence, I mean, negligence is a standard, right? You know, you have a, a duty and you have a, uh, a duty, you have a duty and you're not supposed to breach that duty. So if you're within the parameters of using it properly and the person is injured, but it was used for the right reason, just less likely they're going to be successful, but, you know, nothing is guaranteed in litigation, and a lot of this stuff is dependent on judges or juries, depending what type of trial you're headed for, and that's our job as Corporation Counsel, to figure out whether there was negligence involved, whether it's not, whether we should take it to a jury or a trial, or whether we should settle, because it might be something that it wasn't quite the way it was supposed to happen. And that's about as best as I can answer that question without being an actual litigator, uh, at this point in my career.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a short video on how the Bola Wrap works, um, I don't know if we're able to bring it up, Malcolm, would you attempt to bring that video up?
Yes, sir, I think we can show this, uh, we might not have audio, but, uh, bear with me one moment, sir. Councilmember, the video continues substantially.
All right, I think that's, thank you for the video. Uh, one question, um, to the Commissioner, um, we saw that little hook, um, the little hook that wraps around the person, how does that hook, uh, what does it grab on to, I, because, uh, you know, there's some concerns that perhaps the hook itself may cause some injury?
It grabs on to the clothing, um, but I guess if you don't have clothing on, then it grabs, grabs your skin.
Okay. And this is Councilmember Darius Priggin. Council President?
I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute. Uh, Commissioner, and I know in my talks with the administration that there was going to be some policy. I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute. Commissioner, and I know in my talks with the administration that there was going to be some policy so that if a person did not have on clothing in the area where it was going to be deployed, that that would not be deployed. Has that been discussed yet? I know it was told to me that that would be the case.
I haven't, I'll let Captain Ronaldo. I haven't had any discussion on that. The the issue that you get into is if you don't deploy that restraint device, the person risks far greater injury from a confrontation with an officer where an actual weapon is deployed. The hooks are very tiny and they're designed to actually wrap around the cord itself. So as it encompasses the person, the hook grabs onto the the kevlar cord or cable and that's what locks it in place. But again, we had multiple officers, we deployed the device on multiple police officers here and other than a few scratches at the worst, bare skin, that's all that we saw. It's not like a taser probe that actually embeds itself into the skin of a person who's been taped.
Okay, I I'll do some follow up offline, but that that is one of the reasons I supported was that was the information that I was given that there was going to be policy that would limit that this tool being used if if the person did not have on clothing. So I I'm going to follow back. Maybe I misunderstood, but I think that is very important to know. What is the injury that could be caused with with that? And I I think that's important when we talk about this hook. And if a person doesn't have on clothing, how far away do they have to be to to be able to use it? What's the?
The effective range for the device is ten to fifteen feet.
Ten to fifteen. All right, I'm going to follow back up, but I really, we have a policy written on it yet?
No, it's once we engage in the pilot prior to deploying it, we'll use a model policy from the company and other police departments.
Okay, yeah, I would want to see a policy before these things move out to the street so that we are all aware of when they could be used, when they could not, if in fact, what I was informed about the clothing is going to be there or not. I think that that this is is important to know, especially had a policy in place. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item.
Motion table.
Hold on one second, Mr. Chair.
Motion, excuse me, Council Member Mitch Nowakowski would like to be recognized.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief. Commissioner, I have some concerns with this. When somebody is used, I'm the biggest concern is somebody that can't break their fall or somebody that falls within the public right of way or falls and hits their head. Somebody that might be intoxicated or somebody that's, you know, if someone is, you know, walking away, this could tangle them and in, you know, cause, you know, potential danger. Just can you walk with walk me through some of my concerns, please?
Again, the the device would not work if somebody was running down the street. It the the legs need to be in closer proximity to each other than somebody that's sprinting. So our policy will not allow for them to deploy this restraint on somebody that would be running away from them. Again, the device really only works in that gap period where somebody is standing still and they're basically in their mind contemplating whether or not they're going to comply. It it's not designed to use on a suspect that's running away from you or actively being aggressive towards you. That's that's where the use of force would have to be escalated at that point. Again, the whole point of the device is to not have to utilize any use of force to take somebody who is going to be non-compliant into custody.
Okay. Commissioner or Mr. Ronaldo, can you explain before you implement tasers or the Bola Wraps, do you have a policy when and when not to use it? So if if you do have a policy, I, if you don't have one, certainly we would encourage you to to begin to put together a policy when you would use these devices?
Yes, of course. Any any type of equipment that we issue, there's a policy and then there's appropriate training. Every officer would receive, I believe it's six hours, training per officer to utilize the Bola Wrap. And again, we've seen policies from around the country. We're just in the process of finalizing what ours would be, provided that we do proceed with the pilot project. But the model policy from the company is basically what the policy would be that departments adopt simply because they know their device and they know how it should shouldn't be utilized.
But that's coming from the company that's selling the product. I'm referring to a policy from the police department, when and when not to use it. As Council Member, Council President mentioned, there would be time where perhaps a person is not dressed or there's times where it would pose a risk to the person or to somebody nearby. And there would be times where it poses a liability to the city of Buffalo. So we're just trying to figure out when and when not to use it. And before it's implemented even is to have a policy that we can look at.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council Member Wyatt. Motion to table by Council Member.
Motion to table.
Seconded by President Phil Tent Chris Scannan.
Item number four, complaint against Buffalo Police Department on behalf of Morgan Eaton.
This item is open.
Item is open. Is there somebody here to speak on this?
Dominique Calhoun was here, wasn't she?
Okay.
Yes, her and Morgan were here. I don't know where they are now.
Yes, sir. They they've been on the whole time. It looks like they just left the meeting. I will try to reach out and see if there was a connection issue.
She's back on now.
Okay, good.
Hello? This is item number four. Is it Morgan, is it?
It's Dominique Calhoun, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Dominique Calhoun. Are you on, Dominique?
We're both on, so this is Morgan Eaton.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, so I'm here today to speak on behalf of Morgan Eaton, my fiancee, regarding an incident that happened with the Buffalo Police Officers Andrew Moffett and John Davidson. John Davidson, who's actually an officer that was involved in Ron O'Neil's case as well. And they both have been all over the news and the headlines and stuff of they both were charged with charges that were dismissed. And these officers have committed perjury, lied under perjury of law on their reports. But I submitted all the videos. A lot of people have already taken a look at the videos and I just want to just make a statement on on behalf of what happened. So there are six simple questions that we respectfully request need to be answered by the distinguished common counsel, our duly elected represented public officials and the B P D Commissioner's Office. Number one, who polices the police? Number two, is wearing a badge a privilege or an excuse? Three, are we safer and better protected when police comply with the constitutional safeguards and follow good and accepted police practices and procedures or not? Four, what best protects our rights, liberties and safety? When we allow police to get a slap on the wrist and get restored to full duties and pay when they lie, falsely and wrongfully arrest someone and fabricate false charges against a member of our community? Or when we hold the police accountable and get rid of the bad apples before they infect the whole bunch? Five, do we get a police, do we give the police a pass on safety and honesty and condone perjury? And six, when is it acceptable to have bad police that lie and falsely and wrongfully arrest people? How long do we want bad police on the force? If you believe that we, the people, through our duly elected representatives possessing oversight authority of the police, should police the police, if you believe that wearing a badge is a privilege and not an excuse, if you believe that we are all safer and better protected when police comply with constitutional safeguards and good accepted police procedures, if you believe that holding the bad police accountable and not giving a pass on perjury, then swift, firm and decisive action must be taken here and now. Our system is only as strong as the weakest link. Only when the least of us has all of their rights protected are all of us safe and have all of our rights protected. Here, police have admittedly lied, committed perjury and fabricated evidence and attempted to coerce a false confession from a member of our community. What message does the common counsel wish to send out? That it condones, ratifies and welcomes police misconduct? Or that it has zero tolerance for police intentionally violating our rights? Should the council enact a new model and erect a sign that says, welcome to Buffalo, where criminals where the criminals wear badges and do as they please? It is our hope that for our safety, for the entire community, that this distinguished body say loud and clear and unmistakable terms that the city of Buffalo has zero tolerance for public employees being paid by all of us that intentionally and willfully break the laws that they are sworn to uphold and protect, that trample on our rights and that lie and falsely accuse and prosecute innocent people. We hope that the council will give hope to all members of our community that it hears our pleas for justice and restores luster to the tarnished reputation of the Buffalo Police Department by showing that it has zero tolerance for police misconduct and the Constitution is alive and well and continues to protect all Buffaloans by firing these officers and recommending that all, that they be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law and that the New York State and West A Attorney store equal justice. Anywhere is a threat is everywhere and justice to anyone is an injustice to us all. If the common counsel fails to act now, when will it act? After that avoidable tragedy, will we ask, why didn't they act and hold the police accountable? They could have prevented preventable harm, but instead they chose to do nothing or worse, pay lift service. I hope this will be the last such meeting of the common counsel on this topic. Otherwise, I feel the next meeting will be discussing the wrongful death or serious injury of a wrongful incarceration.
You're breaking up. Okay. Okay, Dominique. I'm going to allow the Commissioner to respond if he can to the complaint against the Buffalo PD.
Can can, am I clear before he responds?
Well, you were breaking up. That's why I I moved over to the Commissioner because we'd lost you when you were making your presentation. So I don't know where you left off.
Actually, I'm today here to six questions.
Okay, all right, but all right.
What's question number six?
I'll call it so it can be submitted.
Excuse me, yeah, you would submit it, please, but Corporation Counsel asked what was the sixth question you had?
That's where I broke up at?
Yeah.
When is it acceptable to have bad police that lie and falsely and wrongfully arrest people? How long do we want bad police on the force? That was the sixth question that I had. But if if I broke up, then I I would just like to say, we hope all the council will give hope to all members of the community that hears our pleas, this restores luster to the tarnished reputation of the Buffalo Police Department by showing it has zero tolerance for Buffalo police misconduct and that the Constitution is alive and well and continues to protect all Buffaloans by firing these officers and recommending that they be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law and the New York State and the U S A Attorney Generals be requested to fully investigate and take all necessary actions to ensure equal justice to all. Because an injustice anywhere is a threat to an injustice everywhere. An injustice to anyone is an injustice to us all. And furthermore, I spoke to the Commissioner a few months ago and he told me specifically that anything like this shall occur under his direction, that he would make sure that these people are held accountable. So I just want to hear what he has to say about about these officers.
Thank you, Moni. Can you respond to the complaint against the Buffalo Police Department? If you're able.
Assistant Corporation, Assistant Corporation John Hannibal. I have been, I apologize for interjecting, Mr. Chair. These are cases that are not only actively in litigation. It's my understanding they're also actively under investigation or regarding.
Could I interject?
Corporation is speaking.
No, because he's saying less information. That's not correct. On the Eaton case, we're not in litigation and everything has been.
Pardon me, I I'm going to ask you to mute yourself while the Corporation Counsel and wait to be recognized before you can speak again. Thank you. Go ahead.
So if the Commissioner wants to speak generally about his feelings about bad police officers and things like that, I have no objection. If he's going to start speaking specifically using the names of these officers and the facts that are involved in these cases, I think that is, I don't think it's prohibited.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, would you like to respond generally?
I think I could say is this case is being investigated by internal affairs.
Okay, so there is a an open investigation going on against the police officers in question. And there may be pending litigation from what I understand. We're not going to get into, we're not going to litigate it here. That's something that at some point it will come back before the common counsel. But regarding, certainly we would ask questions at some point with regards to the disposition of this case. It's not like it's just going to go away. At some point, we'll ask what was the disposition on this particular case. But we can't discuss it right now because of possible pending litigation. We're going to move on to the next item. Council Member Wyatt.
Motion to table.
Motion to table seconded by Council Member Wingo.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I I had my hand, I don't know if I had anybody see my hand waving, but I think. Okay, thank you. Real quick, before we go to the next item, just, you know, address some of the things that Ms. Calhoun mentioned regarding who polices the police. Now, first and foremost, of course, command polices the police ideally. However, they can't do that. How come they can't do that? Because of the P B A. They can't reprimand, they can't punish without the P B A stepping in and then turning around and giving these police officers, the bad ones who are giving the good ones a bad name, reprimand or consequences. And just to answer her question from my personal opinion, yes, it is a privilege to wear a badge because you have the power in your hands to change someone's life. Now, she also posed the question, are we safer when police follow proper procedure? I believe we are safer when they follow proper procedure. If any of her questions are going to get answered, let me just try to give my little humble opinion on what I believe the issues are. When they follow proper procedure, I do believe we are safer. When they follow proper protocol, I do believe we are safer. However, when they don't follow proper protocol and procedure or the standard operating procedures that are laid out in their contract, what happens? The union then steps in again. It gets these bad officers who give all the good officers bad names their jobs back. And then she asked, what were the best, what best protects our rights? To be protect, who 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 or what best practices? I can't remember what the question was. But what protocols protects our rights as people? We talked about it earlier today regarding the 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 right to know. Those are things that we can put in place that will most likely be blocked by the union again to keep the 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 community from knowing information that they are entitled to, which would aid in them feeling safer. And then she asked a question. Do we give police a pass on perjury? I can answer that question. And is bad policing acceptable? I think we all know that bad policing is unequivocally unacceptable. There is no reason for bad police and I don't care if you had a bad call or a bad day. If you had a bad day, don't respond to the call, give it to someone else to respond to. Because too many times I've gotten pulled over myself. I have gotten pulled over myself and not particularly in the city of Buffalo. But I've gotten pulled over from police officers who have had a bad day because when I called headquarters, they told me, I'm sorry, Mr. Wingo, this officer had a bad call right before yours. And that should, I shouldn't have to pay for that, though, if they had a bad day or a bad call. So to answer Dominique's question, I don't speak for the whole council. I don't speak for the whole council. I speak for Ulysses O'Wingo Senior and that, no, we do not condone misconduct. But I hope that the same energy that we have, I hope that the same energy that we have, we use that energy to ensure that the, the policies that we have been asking for for years gets passed even as they're in negotiations. Now, I know it's not easy to negotiate with the union because they are, they are a powerful entity. I, I may be looking at four people running against me on my next campaign because I spoke against the Police Benevolence Association. But at the end of the day, we do not condone police misconduct. There is not one council member that I have known on this council, current and past, who believe that misconduct is acceptable. So could, so, so we believe no one is above the law. So with that being said, uh, Mr. Chair, I am, I am hopeful that we can move forward and, and get Ms. Calhoun uh, the closure that she needs after this litigation or investigations are over. And also move toward policies that will protect the rights of the people and the citizens of this city as well as uh, uh, strengthen and restore the trust that the folks have in the police department. Because some of these officers deserve our trust. Some of these officers deserve our confidence and it's not fair for a handful of bad officers to ruin it for all of the officers. And I'm, with that, I'm done. Thank you again, Mr. Chair.
Uh, the motion of Councilmember Rashida Wyatt?
Mr. Chair, I just have one question. Um, how do we know that there's an investigation taking place? What, what type of documentation or what type of information is available so that we know that there is a pending investigation other than just us saying it?
Commissioner?
There is an internal investigation going. I opened the investigation. So there is an investigation going on with um, that.
So when, 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 when there's an investigation, Commissioner, then I guess this is going to process. If someone lodges a complaint to Internal Affairs or to you, what type of documentation is given that there is gonna be, it's gonna be investigated other than they submit it? But do you communicate with them that you're investigating, that there's a timetable which you'll get back to them or something?
The individual uh, in um, in the case, I'm not gonna talk about the specific case, but the individual in the, in the case that involves an investigation, we do notify them and request them to come in and give a statement. So they know that they're, uh, I'm quite sure that they know that there's an investigation going on with this um, case.
But, and, and I, and I hear what you're saying, but in our legal system, we need proof. And so I'm just asking you, what is the documented proof that there is an investigation taking place? I know I just got some information regarding Internal Affairs. I didn't get a chance to go through it yet. Um, but when someone submits a request, and I'm not talking about this particular case, I'm talking about in general. If someone lodges a complaint against Internal Affairs and regarding a police officer, how do they know that it's being investigated? Do you send them a letter saying, hey, we're investigating, we'll get back to you in ten days, we're gonna respond to you? You need to come in on this date so as to take a statement. What is the actual documentation that we provide? So that we know that there's something ongoing on that is gonna be heard that we hope to have a response to?
We, we contacted complainants and we, they set up an interview with their complainant to come in to um, give a statement. Um, sometimes the complainant don't, um, don't wanna come in because they ascertain an attorney and they're, and advise their attorney, they don't come in.
So, so again, my point is, we, we called them, so is that documented? Let's say that you, you contacted them, they don't wanna come in and be heard. Is that documented that they, you called them on a particular date and they decided they didn't wanna come in or you've tried to reach out to them and they decided? And so it's, I guess, a closed case if they don't come in?
Yes, yes, it's documented, it's documented.
Okay.
It's documented and sometimes we um, well now with the um, new procedures, we send um, letters out to them, two certified letters too.
Mm-hmm. So, so what's the timetable and, and I know every investigation is probably different, but do you give them approximate time when the investigation will be completed? Or is it some updates to them, what's going on? I mean, I know you're not gonna give them a, a blow-by-blow um, analysis, but certainly at some point they need to know that we're coming to a conclusion or this, or you know, sometimes you just sit there just like knowing, you know, not knowing what's going on because no one is communicating. Is that communicated to, that, that process with the individual who's filed the complaint?
That um, the complainant is aware of the investigation. We take a statement from them and they, and we keep them informed of it. If, if this, if a case should go to an arbitrator hearing, they are notified and asked to come in to testify. Some people come in and some don't. But um, they are kept abreast of what the um, um, of this case. Now, I can't give them a timetable to when the case is gonna end. Or, but all I can tell them is once, once the clock starts ticking is once they come in to file, file the complaint, uh, whatever their complaint is, the clock, you know, the case is rolling and it's uh, and we investigate.
Okay, so there, so there is no timetable that it has to be taken care of in a certain period of time? It's just open until you get all the information and then you make a determination?
It's usually um, the investigation part, we do it in um, we, we go up to about a year. And we, we shouldn't take the whole year, but it could go into a whole year. And once that, once we do um, the investigation, now we have to determine, you know, we go through the uh, with the contract and if it goes to an arbitrator, um, then we have to wait for an arbitrator to set up a date for an arbitrator.
Okay, so is there expiration date on this particular process? And you know, you set up to a year, that's a long time. And I guess it depends on the severity of the situation, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yes, it does. Um, some, you know, sometimes we can't get a person in to get a statement and um, you know, they, you know, sometimes they, they have personal things and we, we try to work with them. So that's, you know, we um, get them in when we can and, you know, sometimes, like I said, it don't take a whole year. But once we open up a case, we try to, we give it a year to get everything done. But if it's a severity case, um, we can have the case, you know, done and uh, wrapped up within a couple, some months. But once again, it all depends on how this case is gonna go. Uh, my powers is go so far. If it goes to an arbitrator, we have to wait for an arbitrator to come in and hear the case.
Okay, so at the end of the day, and I think we had this conversation before, um, Internal Affairs is under you, correct?
Yes.
And so ultimately, whatever decision is made, is, is your decision?
As far as um, finding, if, if the case is gonna uh, move forward, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to the information that you sent me because I know that Internal Affairs is a, is a part of the issue that the community is concerned about. And um, I, I do think that, you know, having a civilian review board was kinda help the community gain more trust in this process. Because right now, it just seems as though there is not a lot of trust and I understand that. Um, but we all have, have a role to play in this and I think um, those individuals who are being positive and trying to put this thing together, it's not gonna be something that's gonna happen overnight. A lot of the things are not in the council's control. And I know some people like to think it's in the council's control, but it's not. There's a lot of state laws that we cannot um, overturn that. And I think there's some, there's some, some conversation with some of our state officials. I don't know if anyone's had those conversations because of a lot of what we're dealing with, in many cases has to, you know, a lot of this has to go through the state. We can't overturn or go, or be more um, more um, proactive than the state. The state guidelines are what we are, are addressing and have to kind of look at. And I do agree in some cases, and I know that when I talked about the civilian review board, um, the individual I spoke to talked about some of those very issues that we need to have our state officials at the table as well. Because this is, this is not just on the locality. This is really a lot to have to do with the state and them doing things just like the fifty A overturned. That was because of the state. They made that mandate. They made it happen. I know the government is pushing for additional ones. Um, we like to see some of those same things. Some of the things that the commissioner is um, kinda bound by our, our, via the state. So we all have to be a part of this and I just don't, I wanna make people to be clear that this is not simply all in the common council. I know y'all think we have all the power, but in some cases, it's our state officials that have to play a role in this as well. And as we, your attorneys that you have, I think you have some very um, able legal staff that can give you some insights as well. Um, but I'm hoping that this, this uh, this uh, review panel that the mayor has put forth um, is seated and starting to hear um, some of these things. Because again, I think we all have to be at the table so that we can reform in the right way where we all um, ensure that the things that we want make happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'd, I'd like my five minutes if I could.
No, there's not gonna be five.
Minutes I can have. I'd like to speak on this topic as well.
Please, until you recognize, um, one of the hardest things to do is manage the time. Uh, we have limited time. We have a council meeting that is going to happen in about fifteen minutes. And there are things that we need to discuss prior to that council meeting. So I'm gonna give you three minutes. Um, if, if.
I just ask a question, please, because I, I asked a question in my last, in my last statement and it was not answered. So my question was criminal.
Can we have some kind of control here with the, regarding the muting, please? Thank you. Miles, um, please try not to be repetitive. If there's something that you can add, go right ahead.
No, for sure. And I appreciate the, uh, the time there and I know it's getting a little lengthy here. Um, we did spend a lot of time talking about um, quite a few things with respect to police reform, but I think that the, the main focus that everybody is, that wants to accomplish here is restoring the uh, restoring the confidence with the public and the Buffalo Police Department. And I think that with Dominique Calhoun and with Morgan Eaton's case here, that this is a prime example of where the trust with the community and the police department has been broken. And I think that this deserves a, a large bit of time. And um, this is one of those instances where we do have it on the body cam. So um, we, we spent some time talking about the body cam footage, um, and, and how that plays a role with the city of Buffalo. And um, you know, just to kinda educate people on that, there's no requirement for any police officer to have their body cam on anytime. If you read the actual policy that's, that's stated in the, in the Buffalo uh, police policy with respect to their body cam footage, it, it words it that they should maintain their body camera on when responding to calls, right? And we all know that leaves a door wide open for them to leave that off, um, or to not turn it on or to turn it off while they're responding to a call. Um, so that rating of itself uh, as a, as a policy um, is, is very wide open and doesn't really have any teeth or hold any enforcement to, to leaving your body cam on. Um, but luckily, the officers left their body cam on when they were dealing with Morgan Eaton and we got to see that they were clearly um, lying about the drugs that were found inside of the, the pill case for, that was actually, that belonged to Dominique Calhoun. Um, and I don't think that this is uh, something that we should have police officers sitting on our force for another year while Internal Affairs is investigating this issue because that's a travesty to our community. Um, because I drive in the city of Buffalo every single day and so does Dominique Calhoun and so does Morgan Eaton. And these police officers are gonna be back on the streets if they're not already, um, once they're, uh, once their paid or unpaid suspension is over, right? And I think that we all know, um, based on the Buffalo City Charter that was created by the Buffalo Common Council, um, that the police commissioner explicitly has the ability to fire a police officer. Um, and I think that we use the PBA contract um, as a circumvention um, to the police commissioner's power there. Um, however, you know, we have to look to the state for guidance to this because New York State um, appellate court has ruled in favor of jurisdictions when it comes to firing police officers, even when the Police Benevolence Association has it in their contract where it has to go through an internal affairs investigative process. So I can provide you guys with all that information.
Hold you for the three minutes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, for sure. So I'm just saying that you guys have the ability and I think that you should exercise that. Thank you.
Just one question. Is there a pending lawsuit, um, before we go any further with this? Well, Dominique?
No, there's.
There's no pending.
Internal Affairs investigation has been open. No, it's not. And the Internal Affairs investigation has been open and closed. They suspended them for thirty days. What we're asking for is them to be charged criminally and the case to be forwarded to the Attorney General's office. But no, there is not currently a suit, so we can talk about it all day.
Thank you very much. The Commissioner?
And we haven't received anything from Internal Affairs or the Commissioner's office at all.
Would you please respond? Um, is there pending litigation? I thought you had mentioned something about pending litigation.
One minute, sorry. Excuse me. Again, this is Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon. I think at this point, I don't necessarily need to reiterate um, that John Hannibal and myself and other attorneys on this all is the attorneys of the city of Buffalo. And I would advise at this moment that you do take our advice and um, and what John has said, that these cases either are um, impending litigation or may be impending litigation. So we wanna be very careful about the things we discuss and make sure that our discussions are broad and do not identify any particular facts, et cetera, of those cases. Thank you.
Councilmember, Council President Darius.
I, I, I just wanna say this and I know we have to move on in fairness to the other people who are on here, but this Calhoun and they, they, they stayed through all this, probably should have did this agenda differently. However, it is, it, it looks raggedy. It looks raggedy when we say there, I, I, somebody needs to contact me um, in between now and the council meeting, because if we don't have a pending lawsuit right now, if, unless you know something and you don't wanna share publicly, that's fine. But at the end of the day, if this council has not been served and a citizen, because probably every citizen that comes before this board or the council could potentially have a lawsuit. Um, but at the end of the day, if we haven't been served a lawsuit and we haven't been notified by any attorney that there's gonna be a lawsuit, what I don't, you know, this is, this is a real watershed moment. Because if at the end of the day, we're saying to the public, come to the council, come to this, uh, uh, this board, come to this, and then they do, and then the way we handle it, and I know, I know time, I got it, but this is too important. If the way we handle it is to say there could be a lawsuit, I think that it is going to further erode the trust between the community and especially the council because it's the only place, because most of what has come forward, and I think Councilmember Wyatt said, a lot of this, we might not be able to control, but what we can control, we need to control. And one of the things that this council has is our own, and we, we just gotta be clear here. If we're ever gonna get to a better place, we gotta have these real conversations. It's our own, we do have a, a, an investigatory uh, mechanism. Now, we don't wanna run over anybody else's, but if nobody wants us to run over anybody else's, somebody's gotta say something. Cause the first time I heard about this being investigated was just now on this call. I've been very vocal about this situation. I've never had a talk with Mr. Eaton, I don't believe. And if I did, I forgot, but I did read about it. I did watch the footage. I was, and I won't, that, based on Corporation Council's suggestion. But what I will say, Mr. Chair, this should not be received and filed. This needs to be heard and we need to prove that there is either litigation and that there is an investigation. And my suggestion is, someone needs to be in touch with Mr. Eaton if there is an investigation that, that, because what I'm watching, and, and if I were in the same situation, I wouldn't want somebody to just tell me no, just no and say, this is how we're doing it. Somebody within the next couple of days ought to be in touch with this man. Um, uh, you saying I can't say, I got a lot to say, but I won't say it based on that. But until I see that there is, because the next time I will say it, I wanna see or know. Somebody, this, the, the, this government has to communicate better. Because this was a huge issue and if it happens to them, it's gonna happen to somebody else. And we gotta make sure, when we talk about police reform, it is beyond policies and laws. It is also about building trust and that will not occur if we do not answer and show proof. So that if there's a lawsuit or something pending, come on, put it on the table and we, then everybody shut up. But until then, if there is, if no, if this city has not been served, um, I'm taking exception with not answering their questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Dominique a question? Dominique, how many councilmembers have you reached out to to get this resolved, including myself? I, I know you reached out to me. You and I talked already. How many councilmembers have you called?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Three.
I spoke to you, I spoke with you earlier before this meeting and I told you that one o'clock, I have to get to a shoot review meeting on homicide and shootings.
Yes, you did. Um, the Commissioner had explained to me, um, uh, when we last spoke that he had to leave at about one o'clock and it's one fifteen. Um, his command staff is still there. We'd like to move on. I agree, um, we need to, we, we need to keep this on the table. We need to know the disposition of this, how this is proceeding along and that the complainants are being informed. Um, because there's, there's talk that they're not being informed and I think there's something wrong there. Something is falling through the crack. That should never happen. Any complaint should, any complainant uh, should at least be informed of what's going on and how the case is moving along. And it should be updated as well. So Commissioner? So commissioner, uh, if you can reach out to the complainant here, uh, let them know where you are in this process, what the disposition. It's going to remain on the table. So this common council can also be informed as to the disposition of this complaint. So we're going to, I know there's a lot of people that want to move on. Um, I beg your indulgence. We have other items that we need to get through and we have a two o'clock meeting. And as I said before, there are things that we need to discuss before the two o'clock meeting. Thank you very much.
A motion to table?
Motion to table seconded by council member.
And Mr. Chair, I'm going to have to leave out. So can you, um, council member Scanlon, he's on the committee. Can someone else call?
Chris, can you call him?
Yes.
Okay. Next item.
Item number five, police for reform recommendations.
Item is open. I'm not sure if anyone's here to speak on it.
Items open. Does anybody wish to speak on it? We do have the information in front of us. We have gone through much of the reforms. Um, if there's nobody to speak on it, uh, what we'll do is we'll move on to the next item.
Uh, motion to table.
Motion to table seconded by council member Wingo.
Item number six, Meadows regarding incident with Buffalo Police Department and Erie County District Attorney.
This item is open. Is there somebody here that wishes to speak?
We.
Carollette?
Carollette's here.
Yeah, I had to unmute. Sorry. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of, do you guys have the capacity to like go back if I do a share screen and look at what I'm showing you so I could kind of fly through? Because I know you guys are talking about your press for time. Is, is, is it recorded? You can go back through and look at what I'm, what I'm going to put up later? Yes. Councilman Bridgen, are you saying yes, you do have that capacity?
Can you share council uh, staff if she, if she brings it up on hers?
Yes, she has the ability to share. And Ms. Meadows, yes, this is being recorded live. It'll be available on Facebook, YouTube, our web portal and the city website for all to review after the meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. So um, uh, my, my situation with the Buffalo Police began um, back in March, a, a, a woman bought the house next door to me. As you can see in this first video, this is how much distance we have between the houses. And on the right side of the picture is a new furnace pipe that she had put in um, in March. And when I went to go, to go out of the yard, I couldn't get out. And uh, this was like it, because at the time it was, it wasn't fast into the house. And I go to get out and I couldn't get out. And this was the beginning of COVID when they were telling us, you know, go get two weeks worth of food so that, you know, because we're all going to be on lockdown and courts had already closed and everything else. And I go next door to the girl and I'm like, you're HVAC guy, can you get him back out here to do something with this pipe? Because I can't get my car out. And she tells me that if I can't get my car out, it's her problem. And I'm like, oh, that's real cute. Okay, well, I'm gonna cut your pipe then because it's no other way I'm getting out. So I cut her pipe so that I could get out and get to the supermarket and go get ready for um, uh, uh, co- uh, uh, quarantine. So from there, um, there was all kind of chaos on the street. Um, if you guys want to see this, I, I was gonna queue it up to show you stuff. But um, what is this? Okay, um, she, she was just being loud and obnoxious. We were going through, she was yelling and screaming about the pipe. Um, she was, she was threatening to assault me all through the whole thing, had that all on recording. Um, then there was a gate going across the front part of the property that, that I had put up a few years ago. And she sat up there and she started disassembling the gate. And she tells everybody that the gate that we're, the, the, now the fence that everybody's fighting about, which is in the back. On, on this video, I'm saying that the, the fence is going over onto her property and she's telling everybody that the fence that's in the back is the, is, I admit it was whatever. But the fence that she's lying about now is actually the front fence that she, that she disassembled. And the police made her put it back and then she took it down again. So when she took it down again, then I went into this kind of foolishness. First she, first she stuck glue in the gate, then she cut it. She came through with a grinder and she cut it. Um, then once she did cut it all down, she cut my fence down, my, or, or the gate down. Then, um, she, oh, that's the wrong one. Oh.
Let, let, I know.
Then I had to put up with her putting, um, she put galvanized pipe through the fence post. She put two foot long galvanized pipe through the fence posts to scratch my car up. And you could see the scratch going along my car. All kind of racial stuff was going on at first. Um, when she, when everything first jumped off, she was on social media trying to incite a riot. And she was telling um, her friends on her Facebook page who, who are predominantly white that everything was going on because she was white and I don't like white people. So um, so th- this was the first thing that she had put up about the white people. And then she said, um,
Collette, can I just stop you for a second?
Yes.
I got, just a question. Did you file a police report?
I'm gonna get there, Councilman Rivera.
Okay, can you get to the, can you get to the, I, I see the uh, property damage.
The racial, the racial stuff inciting a riot.
The allegations that are being made right now. I don't.
This is all part of it. The Buffalo Police have done.
Can you get to the point? Because we're, uh, we're not going to just forget about this. At some point, we're going to table it. Uh, but I'm just trying to understand, did, is there a case pending in city court? Did you file a police report? I mean, that's what I'm asking right now.
I've been trying, that's what I'm saying. I had been trying to file reports on all of this stuff. The police never would do anything about all the threats. Here we got stuff with, with um, that they, she was saying, uh, she was, uh, people were threatening to fight me and cough on me and give me COVID. She had all these people inciting all of this violence against me. People saying they were going to get goons and chicken heads to come after me and invoking Carl Palladino and the whole thing. Then um, she's threatened to push this one, she's threatened to push me off the porch and hit me in the head with a pipe. And I'm calling the police and they aren't doing anything.
Okay.
And get, hold on, here, here, here we go, fast forwarding. Because they are not doing anything. This woman gets so emboldened to the point where she's been able to make all these threats. She's been able to threaten that she's putting that she has um, shotguns, one at each door, that she's going to come after me and everything. And she's going to defend her property and all of this foolishness. And it gets to the point of this, where one night she, I'm sorry, that's a bull picture. Um, where one night she, um, she attacks me and what I had my.
Hey, um, excuse me, we're, we're gonna ask the police department at this point.
So here's, here's, she's, she split my ear away from my head. Um, she hit me with a cast iron skillet from behind. I never saw her coming. She snuck up behind me and she hit me with a cast iron skillet in my back. She collapsed my lung. I was in the hospital with um, a chest tube in my chest draining blood out of my lung for two days. And do you, and when we get to this point right here, um, the, um, the problem that came up was the Buffalo Police, why can't I move this? The Buffalo Police.
Can I, we have to, we have to uh, let the police department respond now. Hold on.
Okay, but.
Because you're gonna, you, no, Collette, please, let me let the police department respond.
But you need to hear, you need to hear this part in order for them to respond. So let me just queue this up really quick because this came from one of the district attorneys. So the, so the district attorney. So, did you guys hear that? You want me to play it again?
We didn't hear it. There's no audio. Um, we have no audio. Um.
You can't, you can't get the audio?
No, let me, let me allow the, the command staff to respond to the complaint that you made. Um, can we uh, go back to Captain Ronaldo? Is the command staff still here? I know Byron Lockwood had to leave. Can we go back to the screen? Malcolm?
Council member, the police command staff left when they announced their exit at one fifteen.
Okay, so they left.
Right. So, so then just to summarize what was in the video for you, the district attorney told me the police had went on after that assault and they get, the police gave me a warrant card. They refused to arrest her the night of the assault. They gave me a warrant card and told me I had to go file my own charges when court opened back up. When court opened up after COVID and I went in to file the warrant card, the assistant district attorney then interfered with me even filing the charges. He came down and told me he was not going to prosecute the case as a felony. If I wanted, if, the only way he would do a warrant on her was if I agreed to do it as a misdemeanor. And I got up and walked out and his rationale was, was that if the, if, I, it was not that serious. What happened to me was not that serious if the police didn't arrest her. And if, and if it was that serious, then they should have done their jobs. And since the Buffalo Police didn't do their job and arrest her, he was not going to prosecute it as a felony. He was refusing to even look at this whole situation and investigate it. And, and, and believe me, I know, I'm sorry that I know you don't have any say so over the DA and I, I'm not throwing that in on your lap. I'm just saying it as a matter of point. And um, so, so, so that's where that whole thing, that's where that whole thing is.
Let me just, for the, so we can move on. Uh, we can ask the district attorney, do you recall the name of the assistant district attorney that you spoke with?
The assistant district attorney that was on that was Schimmick. And he has since been um, replaced on the case and the case is now with, um, the case is now with, oh crap, the case is now with, um, uh, Milton Gordon is his name. And, and, and I've dealt with some other things with the Buffalo Police that they are not.
Get into other things right now. We're going to stick to this. Um, we'll
Okay.
have our staff contact um, district attorney Milton Gordon on the disposition of this and where it's going and why it was um, charged as a misdemeanor versus a felony. Um, I mean, the law says that in order for it to be a felony, it has to be serious physical harm. Um, and that's probably why they didn't consider it as serious physical harm.
Serious physical is, a felony is use of a weapon and serious physical harm. Use of a weapon was hitting me with a cast iron skillet and serious physical harm is collapsing my lung and putting me in the hospital for two days with a chest.
That is why we're going to ask the district attorney why the charge was with the misdemeanor, not a felony. Uh, but we can't settle this here today. We'll have to get more information. So thank you very much. The word, motion is to.
Motion to table?
A motion to table seconded by council member Wingo.
Item number seven, partnership for the public good, community policing report.
This item is open? Anybody here from?
It's me.
For the public good?
Yes, my name is Tom Gabe here and I'm representing PPG.
Can I ask you to summarize? Because we are really pressed for time and I hate to cut you short. Um, but we have the, your information in front of us. So if you can summarize it and we'll certainly put it on the table. And we'll, police department to consider and review it.
Okay, definitely. So the biggest thing um, outside of the twenty sixteen report that you guys have, which was in partnership with Open Buffalo, um, PPG really wanted to highlight a lot of racial disparities that are more recent based on the twenty nineteen police um, arrest data. And that last year, there were over eighty four hundred arrests and fifty seven percent were for misdemeanor or low level charges. And that demonstrates an urgent need to find and identify alternatives to arrest when police interact with people um, primarily who use drugs, because that was one of the, the top charges that we saw. And it signals that we really need greater harm reduction and community-based approaches. And specifically when it comes to black and, black and brown individuals, black people face higher rates of arrest compared to whites in Buffalo, noticeably on charges that are subjective and depend on the perspective and response of police officers. Um, a couple of quick examples are seventy one percent of people that were arrested last year for obstructing government administration were black. And sixty two percent of people arrested last year for resisting arrest were black. And overall, black people made up fifty two percent of all misdemeanor arrests last year, though they only comprised thirty seven percent of Buffalo's population. Um, so basically, rather than address, um, take steps to address these disparities with the Buffalo Police Reform Agenda that recently came out that include discussions of tasers and a lasso type restraining device that we don't need to get into. Um, the community is basically worried based on the trends of reforms that are at odds with the residents' priorities. And so while lethal approaches to public safety are welcome, and it's a welcome attempt as we try to reimagine what policing is in Buffalo, we believe that more time and money are best spent on proven policy solutions such as pre-arrest diversions, the civilian oversight, which was repeated numerous times throughout this entire meeting, and community-based health programs. And so one of the proven solutions that is mentioned um, in the policy report that is also lifted up is a law enforcement officer, um, a law enforcement assisted diversion program where people accused of arrestable offenses that come into contact with police would be diverted into intensive harm reduction case management instead of just facing arrest. Where we're not relying on the justice system in courts to basically serve people and give them services. We want to keep as many people out of the criminal justice system. And then um, one of the last two points I want to make is that I would be remiss if I did not mention the community and community partners' calls to de-center law enforcement from responding to mental health crises. And this position of putting mental health providers and social workers at the forefront was recently supported by the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the American Psychiatric Association, CIT International, which is the very organization that implements CIT police programs, the International Association of Police Chiefs, and others in an open letter. And that's on top of the over a hundred and fifty social workers and mental health professionals in the city of Buffalo that came together and said that they wanted an alternative. And so since twenty sixteen and wrapping up, some recommendations from our report and our partners' calls um, for change have been implemented. Um, that include disbanding this um, strike force unit, the BPD um, being accredited, issuing stop receipts and issuing fix-it tickets for correctable violations. But today, our partners are very clear that they want more than incremental changes and we need something else to get us to the finish line. And so we stand with our partners in calling for a a dramatic reduction in arrests and police-based interventions. Thank you.
You're muted. Uh, I provided um, the information you have provided us to the police commissioner for them to review and respond. Um, the diversion program, uh, we all support, I think we support, at least I do, the diversion program for low-level offenses. And I think the marijuana and other low-level offenses, um, there should be some kind of diversion where people don't have to go to jail or prison and tie up the courts with low-level offenses. So I think that many of us support that. Uh, we're going to continue to um, talk about the diversion program as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to ask council member, council president Protemp to move on.
Motion to table?
Motion to table seconded by council member Wingo.
Item number eight, Open Buffalo Report on Criminal Justice.
Item is open.
Mr. Chairman, we have this mark to be tabled.
Motion. Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, everyone. I apologize. The rest of the items are on the table. I apologize um, for moving the meeting along. It's very difficult to manage time, especially when you have other meetings ahead of you. Uh, but we look forward to hearing from the residents, from our constituents and from various organizations that are doing great work um, on behalf of the common council. So thank you so much. Motion is to.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.